Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is now 8:30, June the 7th, 2012. As we do all meetings, we will start with a brief moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. And I'll ask the Commissioners Court to lead us in that. Please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Item one, public comment. I think I have one public comment by Humberto Luna. You're up.
Good morning, Commissioners, Your Honor. The reason for my visit here today is because I have obtained a septic tank permit from the Cameron County Health Department, and I have been battling with the county to obtain and be in compliance for six, going on seven months now. I have all the documentation necessary. I understand I'm limited in time, but the reason I am here is I have obtained a permit. I have installed a $20,000 septic system, which I have notices that I was instructed to do, and now they're refusing to go out and inspect my system. And at this point, it has been a hazard, as I have an adult daycare center up in the front of my property, six tract of land, and at this point, it's been a hazard, you know, and I just want to make this public for the record that I've exhausted every other resource and chain of command that I possibly could to no avail. So that is the reason for my visit here today.
We really can't respond to you officially, I will tell you. Are you going to speak as well? And is it the same issue? Okay. If you want, I can just ask you, Mr. Yonah Jose is here with our Health Department. Do you want to get with him right now and find out what the problem is and why we're not sending our inspectors out to go take care of that? Can you do that? Would you like to go and visit with him too? Maybe go back in the back somewhere and just find out. If he's done everything he's supposed to do, then there's, can you just check it out?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. And then let me know after the meeting or during the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Consent items?
Judge, can I pass something out?
Yes, sir.
I was at a meeting yesterday, and I'd like to pin a few people here.
I already got one, but okay.
Have another one?
I've got three.
Have another one. Ricardo and Michael, would you come up here, please?
Is that it?
That's it, just passing out a few I-69 pins to some people besides Pete and David, because I already have three of them each, you know.
So do I.
Yeah, so do you, and so do some of the others, but I think that, you know, the progress is ongoing. We had, we were at the meeting last week on Thursday, and have a commitment for action this week on a 60 million piece of I-69 that will extend from south of Driscoll to the Corral Street in Kingswood, which is FM 1898, about a 12-mile stretch. And, you know, that just keeps narrowing the gap for us to become connected to the interstate. Yesterday, again, we were up in Austin with the I-69 Alliance and the I-69 Advisory Committee, and everybody was concerned because it seems that all the action occurring is in South Texas. We should be concerned about the areas north. And I says, "Well, we're concerned about all the areas north of us," which is the rest of I-69.
That's what you're drawing.
So, but we...
You may want to mention the General Brandt Road project, too.
Yeah, and also, as a result of the meetings that have been ongoing, I do need to thank TechDOT for their efforts in collaborating and helping us, but the General Brandt Project, which is a project this county has been waiting on to get funded for probably 20 years, is fully funded from 1847 to 510, and we should see activity occurring within the next year on that project, totally funded for construction. We're waiting on some minor details in regards to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which keeps wanting to take pictures of cats crossing that road. But we're looking forward to, the most difficult thing was the funding part, and it is funded for construction. So I want to thank everyone in this court that has played a role in helping us get there to do so, and of course Pete and David. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Consent items. I have just two corrections on item 2W and 2X. On 2W, the date, instead of 5/25/12, should be June the 11th, 2012. And on item X, instead of Charles Hoskins traveling to Weslaco, it was Humberto Barrera traveling to Weslaco. On item double E, I just have a question to pull out. Anything else?
That was mine, double E, yeah.
Double what?
Double E.
E.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve consent items with the exception?
Excuse me?
With the cor-
Excuse me? Judge, good morning.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to table Q.
Table?
Table Q, okay. Any other items? Do I hear motion to approve consent with the exception of item Q, which will be tabled? Approving item W and X with the corrections and pulling out double E. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Gatsa? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries. On item double E, I just have a question to pull out. Anything else?
That was mine, double E, yeah.
Double what?
Double E.
E.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve consent with the exception of item Q, which will be tabled? Approving item W and X with the corrections and pulling out double E. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Gatsa? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries. On item double E, I just have a question regarding that particular travel item. I think that travel item, who's here from the doctor's office or from Judge Gonzalez's office? That item was requested on May 7th. It's a traveling to San Marcos for some civil process seminar. In lieu of the, of the loss of Mr. Gonzalez, I don't know if that, that's something we want to approve now since he won't be in there January 1st. Who's going to address that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if he needs those hours for this year, the term length, or it's for national.
Okay, let me, can you find out? Let me have a motion to table.
Can we approve them if they're for this year, that he needs them? Go ahead and approve the travel. If they're not for this year, deny the travel. Can that be the motion?
If you, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to support the travel at all. I mean, there's no point in it, I mean, if he's not going to be there January 1st, and why spend money to go get educated on this? I mean, what can happen? I don't know what the consequence would be. I don't know.
The requirement is JP's have to get 20 hours per year, and I'm not sure if it's October, the fiscal year. He'll be in office from October to December, so maybe that's why he's just going to a six-hour instead of a 20, if he won't be there the whole year. I don't know.
Yeah. He doesn't, he hasn't taken any travel this year, so.
Okay, I just, okay, let's table it and just clarify it. I just don't see the point. Move by Commissioner Gatsa to table, second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Pete, is there anything you want to take out of order? Do these guys have to go back or anything?
Uh, we can just move.
Okay. Well, let me just, let's just follow it. Budget amendments, line item transfers, salary schedules.
Judges and Commissioners, they were placed before you. There's one budget amendment for the District Clerk's office, setting up some funding for some overtime that had been previously approved by the Commissioners Court for a, the computer center to do some work for them on their, on their civil side. It has nothing to do with Tyler Technologies' project. The funding is coming from their technology fund. The next three pages are line item transfers. There are, the majority of them are within the department, within budgets. On page two of those, I just want to make note for the indigent services with autopsies. With the $17,000 that's being allocated there, we're out of funds for autopsies. We will have to allocate funds from somewhere else for the remainder of the fiscal year. The one below that is the sweeping of lab salaries into general administration. It's just over $95,000. The last two pages is, page three is additional revenues that were allocated to those particular grants, and then you have two salary schedules. Well, it's the same department, but there's two sheets for the juvenile probation where they're reallocating the phone allowance from one slot to another.
Do you recommend approval?
Yes.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries.
I have a question. Javier, on the autopsies, do we, are we having more deaths than normal or did we under-budget or what?
Well, last fiscal year, well, prior year before that, we were actually in a contract with Dr. Farley, I believe it was, and then she was no longer wanting to provide services for the county, and so in the interim, we're contracting with a service. The service is a lot more expensive than the original doctor. I know the county had gone out for RFQs for a medical examiner, it was, and I, there was supposed to be, or we were planning on entering into a contract with an individual. I'm not sure where we are with that, but that was supposed to, you know, get us back to what we were spending. It's just the service is more expensive than contacting with an individual, and so we're spending more money. I don't know that there's more.
We're paying per autopsy, and that's what's put our cost up.
Well, actually, we're, plus we're paying for their travel. We're paying for, within the invoices, I think there's some, if they're called in, as opposed to the dates that they're regularly supposed to be here, then we pay their per diem, you know, their travel and what have you, and so.
Is there any way to figure out, David, I mean, we were talking to, I think, one of the people that we were?
We've been talking to the, the doctor that is currently doing the autopsies for, for the county, which is the doctor that's on contract with that agency, and so, you know, she was supposed to get back to us about a month and a half ago, and we have her back. I did contact her earlier this week to set up a meeting to try to get some direction on whether or not she wants to split from that agency and come work directly for the county, which would help us in the long run. If we do go in that direction, I think we'll be back to, you know, a little bit better handle on the, on the expenses. But as Javier was mentioning, you know, you have the contract, which is for the service, travel, I think she's from Lubbock, so you have to pay for the travel, the hotel, all that is included, which helps the surprise.
And no one, no one locally is willing to do it?
There is a doctor that has expressed some interest, Dr. Salinas. The only issue that I see there, and it's something that we'll probably have to talk to the DA's office about, is for many, for the past, for the time that we've been involved in this, is they really wanted somebody that was certified in forensic, forensic medical examiner. And I believe Mr. Salinas is not, and so because of issues that come up with-
And trials.
Right, and trials, and being certified to, to be an expert witness, they want to have somebody that's certified. Now, we can probably get somebody that's not certified to do the, you know, autopsies that come up on a regular basis, you know, but they, they have expressed that they want somebody that's certified, which makes it more difficult to find somebody than.
Okay.
We should have, we should have word from her very soon.
Whether she's going to do it or not.
Yes. And the contract with that agency is about to expire, right?
It can expire, I mean, we can terminate.
We need to have someone to pick up the-
But we need, right.
Okay. Yeah, we can just keep up with that, because, I mean, we're out of money already.
We thought we were going to be able to save some, some money there, but it's been the other way around, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear, I had a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries. Claims.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning.
The registers are check numbers 280826 through 281072, for a total of $3,632,80466. Then there's another register for $2,945, check number 281073 to 281074. Third register for $207,26339, check numbers 281075 to 281191. Payroll claims for $3,192,803.71. That would be check numbers 281196 to 281331. Another register for $15,304, check number 281332 to 281334. And then another run for loans would be $25,200, $28,01335 through check number 281336. In the first register, there's a void. Word number 281036, that was $3,197.52. And we also had a void from a check run back in May 18th, check number 280080 for $358. We also have the, the payroll EFTs, they would be EFT number 177741 through 179645, and then payroll checks for, from 419316 through 419480. That would be all of the registers and payroll checks.
Thank you. Any questions?
What are the voids from?
The, the, one of the voids, the one from the first register on, on Jundez, the first, it's, it included some invoices from another vendor, and they was vendor, let me see. Staples Advantage. That's check number 281036.
So we were paying one vendor for someone else's invoices?
Yes. Yes. Sometimes in the keying in of the vendor number or, or the, the vendor, they get mixed up.
Okay, so the check went for the wrong person.
Yes.
Okay. And the other, the other void?
The other void was the, the employee did not attend the training. So this was from a, a past register on May the 18th.
So we were going to pay for them to go and they just didn't go?
Yeah, they didn't attend for some reason.
All right.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to approve claims?
Some of-
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Please note my abstention on the affidavits I've provided.
I've got an affidavit on two claims that I will provide to you, on 281121 and 281122.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes. Are those ready? April 12th, April 19th, April 26th. Do I have a motion or you all want to, need more time?
I'll make a motion to table.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez to table, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries. Item D, consideration of, and approval of lyseca store building and parking lot layout?
Judges and Commissioners, you have in your backup the layout that was prepared by Mr. Ruiz, and that takes into consideration the comments that were given by Commissioners Court the last time the item was on the agenda.
Pete, where is the funding for that particular project coming from?
2011 bond proceeds.
And you, you recommend approval?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, do we have an idea of that cost, Pete?
Of the parking lot?
A guesstimate.
I'm not sure. I know that building improvements, we had a budget of about $100,000. The parking lot, I, I'm not sure, Pondo.
That's fine, that's okay. Just wondering.
Moving and second.
The idea of the parking lot was, we were going to do it in-house.
Yeah.
And we did, we-
Mostly for materials?
Right, exactly. We had initially done layout in-house, and then we just, this one just incorporates some of what we had already done, but it, it'll just be the materials that, that we'll pay for.
Not a problem.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Item E, consideration, approval of resolution authorizing a development agreement between Cameron County and the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority?
Judge, if we can do item E, F, and G concurrently.
Okay, item, I already read off item E. Item F, consideration, approval of an order authorizing the issuance of Cameron County, Texas Revenue and Tax Bonds, Series 2012, State Highway 550 Project levying an annual ad valorem tax, entering into a trust agreement and bond purchase agreement, delegating authority to approved terms and other matters related thereto. Item G, consideration of, and approval of order authorizing the issuance of Cameron County, Texas Limited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2012, and marking, I'm sorry, and making provision for the security thereof, delegating the authority to certain county officials to execute certain documents related to the sale of the bonds, entering into a purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and a paying agent registrar agreement, and approving other matters related thereto.
Judge, what I'd like to do is start off with Dave Gordon, who's the financial advisor for the county and the RMA, and just give an overview of the structure of the transaction. He's got a flow chart that, that we can follow, and then maybe you'll pass it on to Brian Cassidy. Brian is the attorney that represents the RMA, and he developed the, the ILA that's on the agenda between the county and the RMA. And then Dan Martinez is the bond counsel for the, for Cameron County, and he can talk about the trust agreement and the bond covenants that are included in there. Before I turn it over to Dave, Michael Skeef, who's a board member of the RMA is here. I believe board member David Gatsa is going to be here. I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not, but Mr. Skeef is here. I don't know if you want to, okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gordon.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Again, my name is Dave Gordon. I'm a financial advisor to both the county and the RMA, represent Estrada Henoza. Dan Martinez just moved up here, and again, Brian Cassidy with Lock Lord. I did pass out-
Just make sure you talk a little bit closer to the microphone, Rick. Thank you.
I passed out a flow chart that briefly described the transaction, but I just wanted to summarize a couple of key points. First of all, this is the, the bond order, the inter-local agreement, and the trust agreement that basically governs the issuance of, of bonds in support of the SH550 project. We've been talking about this project for a number of months. I think everybody in the, in the court is pretty familiar with the project. Initially, we had contemplated issuing certificates of obligation in support of that. Ultimately, through a number of iterations, working with the Attorney General, as well as counsel on both sides of the, the county and the RMA, as well as other advisors, we determined that the best avenue was to issue revenue and tax bonds that the county would issue. The proceeds of those bonds would be turned over to the RMA. The RMA will be the, the owner, operator, and developer of the project. The bonds will be secured by a number of different revenue sources. First, the, the toll revenue from SH550. That toll revenue includes a gantry that's already open and generating revenue, a gantry that will be open in December that will be generating revenue, and then the, the gantries associated with the direct connectors that will connect SH550 with 77. So that's the first revenue source. The second revenue source is a, a $27.7 million pass-through agreement with TechDOT. That agreement basically is a contractual agreement that TechDOT will pay $27.7 million over a period of years, and that, those revenues will be, again, pledged to this debt. And the, the third revenue source is the vehicle registration fee. As you know, the, the county levies on behalf of the RMA a $10 vehicle registration fee. That vehicle registration fee is remitted to the RMA by statute. The RMA has previously issued debt that is being supported and paid for by this vehicle registration fee, so that, that will be on a subordinate lien basis. This is, is kind of a one-off credit. We do not anticipate issuing additional debt that would be supported by this particular credit structure, partly because of the pass-through agreement. The pass-through agreement is specifically for this particular project. In addition to the inter-local agreement that kind of describes the basic structure of the agreement between the county and the RMA, there's also a trust agreement that is being put in place. The trustee will be Bank of New York Mellon, who is a very reputable firm that works in this particular area. They also serve as the current trustee for the RMA's existing outstanding debt. There are a number of other facets of the, the agreement. A number of reserve funds have been put in place, a rate stabilization fund, a repair and replacement fund, an, an operating reserve fund. There's also a process whereby the, the RMA has to submit annually a budget to the, the county that basically describes what's going to happen in, in the next year. That budget has three components, an operating budget, a maintenance budget, and a, a capital budget. In addition, there's also contemplated in the agreement a, a county administrative fee that basically is a fee that will be paid by the RMA to the county. There's a, a, a scale in the agreement that basically steps that fee up from $100,000 to $500,000, and then depending upon the actual amortization of the debt and prepayment of the debt, the fee will then kind of de-escalate after that point.
De-escalate proportionally to debt, then?
Proportionally to the payoff of the actual debt. So those are kind of the, the general characteristics of the bonds. Of course, what the, the county issue in the debt, the other pledge is that you are pledging your ad valorem tax based on the projections that we have and, and based on the, the anticipation. We do not expect that the county would ever have to levy a tax to support the debt, but that is a backstop that is being made in support of the debt. In terms of the schedule, as you know, we've been, we've come to the court a number of times to brief you on this particular project. The, the RMA has posted a solicitation for, for bids on the SH550 project. Just had earlier this week a number of bidders conferences for, two different conferences. We expect that the bids will be received back on June 26th. There's a, about a month, a one-month review process by both TechDOT and Federal Highway, as well as, of course, by the authority. Ultimately, they would select the winning bidder, and the, the final sizing of the actual transaction would be based upon the winning bid that would be received. We expect that the, the debt would be issued somewhere in the second week of August or so. As part of the bond order, you are delegating authority to the county judge to sign that bond order, and so we would not be bringing this back to the court again at a later point. The, the final component that I didn't mention was that there will be capitalized interest in an account that will pay debt service on the bonds during construction for a period of time before the, the revenues come in from the, the pass-through toll agreement. So that is the, the basic structure of the transaction, and certainly here to answer any, any questions, as are the two gentlemen that accompany me.
The schedule is not included in these documents, right?
The schedule is not included. Again, basically, the schedule, this, when you, when you, if you approve this today, you're approving a bond order that allows us to move forward. Part of the thing that's been driving the schedule, again, is actually getting the bids back and getting the approval, and, and the RMA approving the final bidder. So we don't, we don't want to price the bonds, we don't want to sell the bonds till we know the exact amount. Right now, the, the order allows for up to 40 million. We expect, based on our estimates from the, the GEC of the RMA, that we would have to issue debt of approximately 35 million. In addition to the, the proceeds of these bonds, there is an additional $5.6 million worth of, of a contribution being made by TechDOT to the project, and that's, of course, in addition to the $27.7 million that they'll, they'll contribute over a period of years.
Any questions? Somebody else can make a presentation on the other items, or you think that's sufficient?
Well, the, the last item, item G on refunding, that's kind of, kind of really a separate issue. We'll talk about that, I think, after this, but really E and F are what we're discussing right now.
Okay.
And I'm happy to turn it over if someone else would like to make some other points, or we can just field your questions.
All right. Let's go to item G.
Well, I've got a couple of questions.
On E and F?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
On the-
Originally, you looked at other avenues. What were those other avenues?
This, we looked really at two other major avenues, and then within this particular iteration, a, a, another way to do it as well, just kind of go through those. Initially, this was part of, of a kind of a comprehensive P3, a public private partnership, or in Texas we call it a comprehensive development agreement strategy. We were gonna try to finance these all as, as a portion of other projects. We then later, once that avenue didn't, didn't bear fruit, we tried to do this. We, we looked at what we could do in the public markets, ultimately decided we, we were not gonna be able to accomplish it on a standalone credit. We went to TechDOT, and we worked with them for a number of months to try to do, issue a CIB loan, a state infrastructure bank loan, to support the debt. Ultimately, that, that did not work, so we regrouped and realized we needed really the, the county's backstopping to be able to, to, to issue the debt. So then, as you know, and as I mentioned before, initially, we tried to do certificates of obligation through a number of, of other methodologies and, and issues, really legal issues. That wasn't gonna work, so here we are today with this particular way in terms of actually funding the project.
So the RMA on their own tried to see about funding this, but there was no avenue?
Well, we have, we have, we have two very robust revenue streams that are being pledged. One is the, the vehicle registration fee. We know, we know within a degree, you know, what that's gonna be, and we know it will grow over time because it's related to population growth, and it's related to the number of vehicles registered in the area. We also have a very robust revenue stream in the pass-through toll agreement. Once the, the project is complete and those payments start, they will be regular on an annual basis, and we know the total amount. The, the revenue, of course, with SH-550 is less predictable. It is a startup, a greenfield project. We do have a toll revenue gantry that's already generating revenue, and we have one that'll be generating revenue here shortly. However, the, you know, the projections in terms of that road are obviously open to some degree of scrutiny, and we'll have to see how they pan out over time. So it's difficult in the public bond markets, looking at those three revenue sources, to kind of cobble them together, and without having to have substantial coverage and be able to prove that coverage, it's difficult to issue debt that way. So having the county's backstop will allow the RMA to issue this debt at substantially lower rates, which ultimately, of course, benefits the entire region.
So the, the RMA could have done it, and it just would have cost them a whole lot more?
They probably could have done it, and it would have definitely cost them a whole lot more. There would also been a significant amount of additional expenditures in terms of other studies that would be required, and then there still would be no guarantee that ultimately they could do it.
Okay, so realistically, I mean, technically, they could, but realistically, probably wouldn't have been worth it, is what you're saying?
Exactly. You know, we explored, again, a number of different avenues. As you know, we've been working on this for quite some time. There've been a number of, of legal twists, a number of other twists that have made this complicated to, to get done, and as everybody, I think, would acknowledge, is, is a project that the RMA wants, that the, the county wants, that, that will benefit the, the population, the region. So we've, you know, turned over every stone to try to come up with a solution that works, and we think that what we have here today is, will benefit, again, the whole region, and is something that we know we can get done, and certainly is within, inside of accomplishing that.
Okay. I think there's, there's a couple of other entities that have done this, right, and a couple of other counties?
Yes.
In Houston and Dallas?
Exactly. And in terms of, for example, the pass-through toll agreement, when you look at the pass-through toll agreement, which there's probably been 20 of those agreements that have been issued across the state, all of those have been in support of really county transactions or city transactions, because you ultimately have that gap where you need to, if not levy a tax, be able to levy a tax. That gives bondholders comfort that, that, you know, if there is a gap, that you can make that up. In this case, we have, we have other revenue sources as well, but still, having the ability to levy the tax makes all the difference.
Yeah, and that, that's what moves a project forward.
Exactly.
Otherwise, it'd never get done, or maybe 20 years from now it'd get done.
Okay.
How's that?
And so, Dave, I assume you recommend, and you're comfortable with us approving this?
Yes, we, you know, we have worked very diligently. Again, there's a trust agreement in place. There's a number of reserves in place. We've done a number of stress cases to, to envision, you know, what might happen, and we're comfortable that, in recommending this as a, as a viable option for the, the county and for the RMA.
And you believe that the, the fee structure associated with it, that benefits the county, is fair to all parties?
In terms of the county administrative fee?
Right.
Yes, obviously, that is a, you know, is a business term. We worked extensively to try to find something that was fair. We ended up modifying that slightly yesterday, and we think that the, the fee structure that is in here, you know, is, is reasonable given the, the effort and, and support that the county is providing in terms of kind of having to administer the project, but also facilitate this, to kind of oversee it over a period of years. We also think that, that it's reasonable, given the fact that the county is assisting the, the RMA with, with making this project happen. So we think that structure is reasonable, yes.
I'll move to approve, Judge.
Second?
On item?
E and F.
Just on item E and F?
E and F.
Moved by Commissioner Gansas, sent by Commissioner Hernandez. Discussion?
I have a, a question for legal. Bruce, did, did you go over this?
I'm in the process of it, and I have a, a number of things I wanted to talk to some of these experts about, if at all possible. For example, you know, the way this is structured, the RMA is gonna be the owner of this project. And, and I know that there's some reason, I heard it this morning. It was brief. I was briefed very briefly this morning on it. But I was wondering if, for example, we've explored co-ownership without partnership of this project to see if that is something that would further secure the county. Dan, maybe I could ask you that question?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Brian Cassidy with Lock Lord. We're outside legal counsel for the RMA. Early on in the process, we did look at, at issues of ownership. Ultimately, we concluded because of the statutory provisions that, that kind of established the separate legal existence of the RMA, that the RMA would be responsible for the financial obligations, albeit as a pass-through to the county, but it would still have this obligation to the county, and that in the future, it would have the obligation and the ability to go to the market and, and issue debt. To have some sort of joint ownership, co-ownership, or ownership structure that didn't vest this in the RMA would, would prove difficult at that point in time. So I think that, from a financial standpoint, it really doesn't make any difference. It, it, you, the county is in the same position as it would be, and it's protected in the same ways that it would be. And from a, from a practical and operating side, and future financial resource side, it presented some real practical issues.
Let me ask this question. Is, the way this is structured, is the RMA's ownership necessary to the collateralization of its obligation to the county?
If I understand your question correctly, yes, I think it is. I think it is necessary.
Okay, I mean, there are clear obligations of the RMA to the county.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
And was that part of the justification for putting the ownership in the RMA, or not?
Yeah, I think so, that they, they were taking on the financial obligation to repay this debt, and they would, whether it was gonna be repaid to the market, if they'd, if they'd ever been able to do that, and repay to the county as its lender in this case. Yes, it, it has to have that ownership of the revenue stream and the projects in order to pledge that, to, to meet its obligations to the county.
Just so that I'm clear, and perhaps it may be some information here. Were there to be a joint ownership of this project, I would take it that early on, that ownership, at least on a risk basis, would be largely in the county because of the way it's structured in terms of this backup. You're talking about this backstopping this project with county ad valorem taxation power.
Right.
The risk that would be associated with that would be to the county, would it not?
In that sense, if the revenues were not materialized and those other revenue streams didn't, weren't sufficient, then yes, the risk would be.
And so, I would assume that if there were a co-ownership, the ownership would largely be in the county until that risk begins to be taken out over the course of the project.
Are you talking about the relative ownership percentages?
In other words, let's say you did it a proportionate ownership. You know, where we start with all the ownership, RMA takes us out as they pay the debt.
Right.
Would there be something wrong with that? I mean, wouldn't that provide the county, Dan, I'll ask you, wouldn't that provide the county with more security in this whole thing, or not?
I guess ultimately, if you're, if you're, you own the project, you're a co-owner, you, you, obviously, you would have that, that more, that more security. But again, as Brian expressed, you know, we did, we went down that road, and ideally, the goal here is, you know, to kickstart the project on behalf of the RMA, and their goal, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, is to hopefully refund and become self-sufficient in, in a few years. What that, what that term is, we don't know, five to 10 years, and to take that out. As Brian expressed, at that point, it'd be a lot more difficult to, from a legal perspective, to unwind everything, considering there's multiple pieces in the current project. For example, we have, you know, the right-of-way pieces. We have, it's part of the current full syst, it'll be part of the, the full RMA system, things of that nature. And as entering the financial markets at a later point, you wanna have the whole system intact. So from a, from a feasibility perspective, it could be done, but it's very difficult down the road.
In other words, if the county owned it?
Right.
It couldn't tax it? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that down the road, if we wanted, if, if the RMA were to take it out, meaning pay us off, want to do the transfers, to, to do other finances on, on behalf of the RMA side, it'd be very difficult because of that ownership transfer, or that, that partialization of the, of the whole system, just solely on this stretch of the, the project.
Okay, well, if, if the RMA ownership is there to collateralize our obligation, or theoretical obligation, our potential obligation, then I can see, I think, why the ownership is best left in the RMA. I was just wanting to explore with you guys, you know, what might be done to further secure the county's risk, okay? Without undertaking the obligation to do other than the financial backing. I mean, that's what you're coming to us for, is the financial backstop. That doesn't mean we want the obligation to go build anything. But, you know, I, I would like to discuss that, you know, a little more with you all. I mean, I, I think I see where you're going, but I got this about an hour and a half ago, or maybe actually less than that.
Let me, let me interject real quick. You represented the RMA when drafting the agreement?
Yes, Judge.
Bond counsel represented Cameron County?
Correct.
In, in drafting the agreement? That's what you get paid to do. So we've had legal look at it. I mean, y'all can talk about it if you wanna, you know, kind of fluff it up and guarantee something, but a little bit better. But my, from my perspective, RMA was represented, we were represented, and you both came to a, an agreement that, that was acceptable to the RMA's interest and our interest. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what else do we need to discuss?
Well, let me ask it this way, to our counsel. You're our lawyer, right?
Correct.
Is this the best guarantee for Cameron County's interest to protect their lending of credit, the way you've drafted this?
Well, it's, it's, you have to look at it in conjunction with that, that question.
No, no, not what the RMA's interest, the county.
No, I'm not talking about the RMA's.
Okay.
I'm talking about what, what the goal here was as, as, as a, as a county, and, and in conjunction with the RMA, because it's really and truly a joint project. The project benefits the county as a whole. Ultimately, you're gonna get the benefit of all the growth and development along the whole project, the system and the project. And so ideally, that's the whole purpose of creating the RMA, to undertake these types of projects, and another methodology to undertake these projects in a different method, to develop the toll road system, et cetera. So it was, from a business perspective, or a policy perspective, if you will, you know, something that was viewed, as the representatives here, you folks at the court, as well as the representatives of the board, working together to, to get to this point, to get this project undertaken. So with respect to whether or not it's the best security, that's debatable. It's whether or not you guys wanna undertake the project as is, because it's been discussed and fleshed out, and agreed to.
And that's, I think, what Bruce is trying to get to, is that the best security? And, and the judge's question to you is, you've already represented our interests.
Right.
So from your representation of our interest, is that the best security, or is that the best way to get the project done?
It's, it's, it's up to how you guys want. If you want, if you wanna have that ownership, it's something that could be negotiated. Ultimately, that's your decision.
Well, it's not if we want to. When we, as we sit here, we're fiduciary of the county tax dollar.
Absolutely, yes.
And so we have to do the best we can to protect our taxpayer dollars.
Right.
And so we need to know from you, doing this, this is the most secure way to protect our tax dollar. Now, what you talked about, as far as getting the project done?
Right.
I agree, it benefits the county, and I don't think we should charge a fee. In fact, my next question to Bruce is, that fee, can we legally charge that fee? Because that's, that's not any type of fee other than a, an interest, or a point, or whatever you wanna call it, and I don't know that the county could or should do that. Because again, the interest is to promote transportation in the county. So on that note, I don't think we should charge the fee. But by the same token, I think there needs to make, we need to make sure that we have a strong, you know, collateral, or whatever you wanna call it, or mechanism of saying, hey, this is the best way we do it.
Well, I think you're hitting on a couple of multiple points, and, and along with this fee. That fee is, is somewhat to compensate you for not having that ownership interest as well, because we are providing this backstop to county. The county is providing this backstop, backstop, and so, you know, we felt there's some value to, to undertaking this project on, on, on behalf of the RMA. And so that administrative fee is, is legal. We, you know, we have, Brian's the expert here. We've vetted this out with the Attorney General, who must approve this transaction. We wouldn't have come to, to you under this structure if it was not legal, or it wouldn't pass muster with the Attorney General. But again, the administrative fee, the ownership issue, it's really a policy decision. You know, if, if it's from a legal perspective, if you want more, more security, we can work to get more security. But is there structure there? There are protections in there. All the revenues are put in trust, so the RMA can't just undertake anything they want with the revenue. It's also providing security for the bondholders. The bondholders are the ones that are lending, lending us the money. They're the ones that need the security. But also, too, they must come back to you guys before they undertake other projects. That's another.
Let me just add something here, and, and the county has done this before. We, in the past, just last year, we borrowed money to close funding gap on state projects, on state roads that are owned by the state, not by the county. And so we funded those projects without any ownership, with the understanding that that road was going to continue to be a state road during construction and after construction, and the state was going to maintain the road, you know, forever. In this case, the RMA is going to maintain the road, you know, after it's, after the construction is completed. So, you know, we, we, the county has done that, you know, whether it's, it's the best guarantee to the county, I mean, I'm, I'm not, not sure.
Well, we get, we get what we want. We get the road, or the infrastructure, which is what we want. Right, and, and that's why I'm saying, why are we charging a fee if we're getting what we want?
I think Brian over here has something to add to this administrative fee.
On your prior point about the, the protection of the county, from my perspective, and having done these types of deals in other places, this has a whole lot of similarity to what the RMA would have to do if it went to a private sector lender, if it went to the bond market and had to make similar type commitments. In other words, you've extracted, and I mean that in a positive way, a lot of protections that would otherwise be the case if this were a private sector transaction. So I think your, I think your counsel and your, your staff has done a pretty good job of protecting the county in that regard. From the fee perspective, I think it's, it's, again, it's, it's a negotiable point. It's a deal point. It's, it was intended, I think, in part to provide some reimbursement of, of the effort and expense that the county would incur in continuing to oversee its investment in this project, its, its lending in this project. Whether it's, whether the amount is the right amount or not, is a, is a, you know, that's an issue that's, that's certainly subject to discussion or debate. That's what was agreed upon, I guess, and, but, but really, the point of the fee is to, is to recognize that the county does outlay some expense, some time, some commitment in, in monitoring its investment, making sure that its, its funds are being used the way they're supposed to be used, and the project's being developed the way it's supposed to be developed.
Okay, well, who agreed on the fee?
Who is, I'm sorry. Let me, let me ask this question right quick.
Yeah, we, we brought this back in February, and we really didn't get any comments other than from the judge, and then those comments were incorporated into what we passed out. But, I mean, that's still, like Brian said, that's still up to the court to make the ultimate decision.
Well, I guess my question would be, why would we not wanna charge an administrative fee? I don't see the logic. I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm missing something, but why would we not?
Well, if, if, if the benefit is that we're getting a road system, and I agree, that's what we're doing it for, why are we gonna tax the RMA with paying us? What doesn't, it, it looks, it's called the fee, but I think it's a disguised interest or point that we're charging, which I don't know that we should do. I mean, if it's gonna cost us $20,000 a year to administer, well, let's charge 20. But just to, you know, throw a blanket, large number out there saying, well, we're lending you our credit. you our credit, so you're going to have to pay us X amount, I, I don't know that as a county, we can do that either. I mean, because ultimately, it's like you said, Commissioner.
I believe we can, because the Attorney General has said that this is something that is within the law and statute for the county to do.
Just as a, as a question for me, has, has the Attorney General approved, as best as they can, this, the concept that we're doing here?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I just, I mean, I mean, I understand the, I understand the, the philosophy, but at the same time, the county is a recipient of revenue for a, for a time period, and went from $100,000 to $500,000. It's going to help us offset costs in, in various areas. I just don't know why we would not want to do that. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I mean, I just, I don't understand that logic. I mean, you know, you know, who did, when y'all spoke with the RMA, y'all agreed to this fee structure? Michael? So, I mean, all I'm saying, look, if, if their attorneys are looking at this, our attorneys are looking at this, and there, there's, there's been a meeting of the minds here with the guys that have spent literally hours and hours and hours on, on these agreements that they're recommending. The AG signed off on it, RMA signed off on it, our administration signed off on it, and then for us to ask questions that should have been asked back in February, March, April, and May, it's just somewhat unfair to these guys. But I think, I mean, I think you're here to represent the county and the RMA, and which all have negotiated out and worked out is a good deal for both parties. Is that correct? So, unless we're going to go back and reinvent a wheel here, then why, why are we spending all this time in, in discussing? Now, Bruce ju-, I mean, yeah, Bruce just got this, and it's not fair to Bruce to ask him all these questions, because he's got a lot of questions, but he really hasn't had the opportunity to look at the agreement. And if he hasn't, why hasn't he? Why didn't he get this agreement back when it was originally?
In February.
Drafted out, or whenever it was? Or did he get the agreement and just hasn't had the opportunity to look at it?
Judge, that's why we hired them to work out the agreement.
Yeah, I agree.
That's why we have bond counsel, okay?
Exactly. We're, we're wasting our time here in nitpicking, and I've been in countless issues like this. They're all, they're all good. The fact that we're making a fee out of it, I don't think we argue with a dollar or $100,000, it doesn't matter. The thing is, this project is good for the county, and we need to get on with it.
And we can all benefit.
We're all going to benefit from it.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, as you say, it's not going to, it's going to be something very positive for Cameron County.
Anything else you want to add? Anybody else? Okay, I had a motion, a second, all in favor, on this on item E and F, all in favor, seeing by my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item G, consideration approval of order authorizing the issuance of Cameron County? I've already read that item.
Does it say on the box?
Motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner, by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, seeing by my saying aye? You want to say something, or you think we're cool?
I think we're done.
Okay. All in favor, seeing by my saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. Item H, consideration, thank you guys, consideration approval of a memorandum, I understand, regarding Cameron County, Brownsville Navigation District, and Amphels, regarding the light on Highway 48. Pete, we've talked about this for a long time, to the tune of putting DPS, black and whites out there during, during, when I was a DPS Commissioner, concerned by, by the port on that, so, talk to me.
Yeah, this is, the county had, hired a consultant to do a warrant study a couple of months ago, and we got the results, met with TechDOT, TechDOT confirmed that there was a need for a, a traffic light. I've had discussion with the, the port, Mr. Camperano, because my concern is having a traffic signal light that, that would be operational 24 hours a day, if there was only two peak times during the day, you know, when we only needed that, that traffic light to be functioning. So, at this point, I think that's, that's negotiable with TechDOT. The traffic signal light can be set to where we can operate a certain period or a certain time during the day, and I, I think the port is, is, is open to that. What this MOU would do is get the motion rolling with the port, with Amphels, and TechDOT to move the project forward.
Is this city, is this inside the city?
Inside or outside?
No, this is county.
It's outside, okay. All right.
And so, I believe the port and Amphels both have already taken this to their, their respective boards and, and approved, so staff's recommendation would be for approval.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides, to move forward and approve the MOU. All in favor, seeing by my saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item H?
Judge, can I interrupt for a quick, I need a excuse. Thank you very much for your consideration. Consent item?
You have your phone number, sir. You have your phone number.
Thank you very much.
And let's give it out to everybody in the audience, so they can call you and wish you a Merry Christmas and stuff, Rick. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item I. Thank you, Eddie. Item I, consideration discussion regarding cellphone allowance distribution for JP, J-Ps, just of the P's judges, whose allowance was not distributed as adopted. Who's going to take that from the auditor's office? And tell us what happened.
The notes that I have here for this item is that we owe precinct, Judge?
Before, before you, before we talk about how much we allegedly owe, can you tell me what happened, and I guess, have you, this may be better for you, kind of go through the process in terms of how we post these things, how the, you know, and how they get compensated, and what happened throughout the years?
Well, I, I know this, this is on because it was discussed in executive session a couple of months ago. I'm not really sure what, what the outcome of that was. I, I know that the individuals were directed to submit a, a claim, I guess, or, or something, asking for the funds to be reimbursed, and, and that's why it's on here. The, the process for actually setting the elected official salaries, the, the, you know, notice is placed in, in the, in the newspaper, notifying the public and the elected officials of, of what their, the Commissioners' Court is considering in setting their salaries. And so, after the Commissioners' vote, then of course, they go through the grievance process if they so choose to grieve, and then after that, their, their salaries are set. For the allowances, I, I don't know the exact year, there was several years ago when it, it turned out where there was actually an individual who, who had a phone and was receiving an allowance, or, and then there were, I think, another time when an individual was receiving a phone allowance but didn't have a, a phone. And so, it was like, well, how are you paying them, and you can't get a hold of them? So, a, at that point, there was a, a procedure that was implemented within the auditor's office that, in order for the individuals to start receiving their phone allowance, they had to provide either a copy of their phone bill, or a copy of their, their contract to prove that they actually had a phone, in order for us to be.
And this would be done on a monthly basis, or annually?
No, just, just upfront, the, the, the first time, in order to get it started, the, the individuals, I guess they weren't receiving it, never provided it, and so.
They never provided the copy of the contract?
Correct. Or a copy of their phone bill.
But yet, when we did the, the posting of the compensation, it was posted in the newspaper, their salary?
Correct.
Plus auto allowance?
Plus phone allowance.
Plus a phone allowance?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Do they have to prove a copy of ownership of an auto?
Uh, no.
To get an auto allowance? No?
No.
Just wondering.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, it kind of ties back into.
I mean, I'm being a lawyer there, okay?
Yeah. And, and that's been discussed.
I like that question.
Yeah, eliminating the auto, auto allowance and having people turn in mileage logs to actually show that they're using their vehicle on a county business.
We've talked about that over the years, and nobody wanted to do it.
No, I don't think it's ever been brought to.
No, it has.
Yes.
Yeah, it has, yes, it has. Not to a vote, it's just part of the budgetary process.
Oh, okay.
And nobody wanted, you know, that was, it was too much trouble.
Well, maybe we should get rid of their auto allowance and just make it part of their salary.
Same thing. Are they going to charge mileage on top of that?
No, no, we wouldn't give them mileage. Like with Tony, Tony used to have an auto allowance, and then he just took it as salary.
They forget that it's been included in the salary.
Well, just keep the minutes.
Yeah, we, we've also had in, in the past, even though the Commissioners' Court sets an elected official's salary, we've had, had in the past where elected officials have declined the phone allowance because of the fact that then their phone records are open, or even if they don't, I guess, now that there's been a ruling, but at that, that time, if they received a phone allowance, there were, it was subject to open records, people could ask for copies of their phone bills. So, they have declined it. So, because you set their salary, they can ultimately decline that payment, and, and that has happened in the past.
But, legal, I think, has told us in the past that even if you have a private phone.
Yeah, now, that's been clarified.
It's, it's still part of the open records.
If you're not using it for county business, it's still open.
I know she borrowed my phone to look at Texas.
Okay.
Yes, anyway. So, that's why it's on.
You know, so.
So, let me ask you, so then, how, how many years did this go back where they did not get the phone allowance?
The only, the JP precinct 31, when he came into office in 2005, we owe him retro to that January 2005.
So, so we owe seven years, basically, of, of, of phone records, and they never saw it on their stub, or that they weren't getting the allowance?
No, they, they.
And they never brought in any type of proof that they even had a phone?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, each year, you know, for both elected officials and, and employees, that the form is sent out to the department head elected official for them to, what's been approved and what it is that they want to pay, and that's, you know, submitted every annually. And of course, the, the notice of what's been approved by the court is published in the newspaper as to the total compensation that's approved for.
Did anybody check to see on their W2s if the auto allowance, I mean, the phone allowance, is it included in part of their W2, or, I know, I don't think they get a 1099, right? Would it be included in the, in the, in their W2? So, did they pay taxes on something they did not receive?
No.
They did not?
If you don't receive it, it's not part of your W2.
Okay. Okay, all right.
You know, I don't have a problem doing it, like, for the current fiscal year that we're in. I mean, I think that that obligation is okay, but to go back seven years, I think I have a concern, you know, I mean, going back to budgets that are already done.
Yeah, because the only place to go here is to go to fund balance, or lap salaries, or something like that to pay something, that, you know, the elected, the, the recipient also has a duty and responsibility to check and make sure that, that they're getting paid what they signed up to get paid. You know, it's like, it's like direct deposit, I mean, if you, you know, everybody, most everybody's on direct deposit, and I'm sure everybody looks at their, at their pay stub to make sure every, you know, they're getting paid what's supposed to be getting paid. But going back to 2005 and saying, hey, King's X, I haven't gotten paid in a year, well, why didn't you catch it in '05, '06, '07, '08, '09, '10, '11, and '12? And now, you know what? You owe me $10,000, or whatever the number is. How much are we talking about? $10,000?
For that precinct, for that precinct, $6,520.
Yeah, but in total, under?
Eighty, $8,040, that includes the other two JP offices.
Yeah, $10,000.
This year, this year, I don't have.
I agree with Commissioner Gatsa, that I think we can go back and retroactively pay this fiscal year, the budget that we're in, and on the other ones, you know, I'm sorry, can't.
Why didn't, why wasn't this caught by the auditor's office?
When payroll receives the, the annual salary report, this is where we expect for you to tell us, this is what you're going to pay to each individual. And the elected officials themselves, they, they write in.
You sign off.
You sign off of what you're, you're going to get.
What your salary is.
And they never, they, they never put down that, I want my travel allowance or my phone allowance.
Okay, but at the end of the year with the budget, if we budgeted to pay that individual that money, then at the end of the year, we have that money left in the budget saying, hey, we didn't pay this person. Why wasn't that reported to the Commissioners' Court?
Because we stupid.
Or to, or to the individual?
Well, because ultimately, with any slot, it's, it's up to the elected official as to, you all set the maximum, it's up to them to determine what they're going to pay that individual in that slot. So, if they choose not to pay it, you know, that's their choice. It's not something that we go back and second guess, hey, why aren't you paying this person 25 thou-, I mean, 25,000, you're only paying them 22, you have $3,000 left. I mean, that's, that's their decision. So, we just go based on what they turn in. There's a form that's sent to them, they sign it, and it's submitted to payroll. So, in essence.
So, they didn't sign a form saying they were getting the phone?
Exactly.
Allowance?
They signed the form.
They only signed up for their pay salary.
They signed the form with their salary.
Because when I was a JP, no one ever checked my contract. Do you have a contract? They never checked mine. I always got paid. At least I assumed I got paid. I counted on the county. I may not have gotten paid.
I don't know.
But, I mean, to me, it's like, if we post it, and we say, we're going to pay this person this amount, we post it in the newspaper, and then we don't pay it, at the very least, the auditor should tell us, hey, you, we didn't pay this, we have this $1,000 left over in these three JP's budgets, or this JP's budget, because he didn't get his phone allowance.
I agree with, with Commissioner Sanchez. To me, if I have a county-issued phone, okay, I don't get the, the allotment, you all have records of who has a county-issued phone. On the other hand, if I'm an elected official and you do pay me a certain X amount of money a year, and it's published, then why would you not, if I didn't step up to the plate, why would you not reach out to me and say, hey, we can't give you this money unless you bring a contract? So, I mean, I think both are at fault here, you know, both the auditor's office and the, the elected official. And I realize, let's say, you're a new, you, you're a new, a newly elected official, most of the time, the people that, the, the staff is aware of what's going on, and maybe that's, I mean, I don't know, maybe that's why Commissioner Sanchez, as a JP, may have gotten paid because your staff takes care of everything, but, you know, still, I think it, it lies on your responsibility and the elected official. So, I agree with Commissioner Gatsa, I think we should go back on, for this year.
I, I think that, you know, as publicly elected officials, you know.
Yeah, we're responsible.
You know, we have a certain responsibility to be responsive, I mean, it's kind of like a travel expense. If I don't turn one in, I can't expect them to pay me. It's my responsibility to turn it in. And I know that I don't turn it in a lot of times, but then, I can't expect them to say, well, you traveled and you didn't turn.
Five years from, you know, five years from now, you went to Austin.
That's my problem, you know? I mean, I take down the responsibility. When we publish the maximum salaries that elected officials are paid, okay? If one of them doesn't want the travel allowance, all they do is they don't sign off on it, and, and we don't have to pay it. It's their choice.
And they can't come back five years later?
If they don't sign for their phone allowance, that's their choice, you know?
So, so did they sign off on the travel allowance? You're saying they didn't?
They did not.
I mean, the phone, the phone allowance. They didn't sign off on it? Was it sent to them to sign off on?
No.
No, the, the other salary report states what you're gonna, what you are going to pay to all the individuals in your department, including.
Including yourself.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Judge, were you not paid?
No, from two thousand and eleven, January, when I came in, I was given the option either to get the allowance or a county phone. I chose the allowance, so not knowing how that system worked, I automatically assumed that it was.
That you would get paid.
Done until March, when I, it was February when it was caught this year. And then they told me, they said, well, you didn't submit phone bills. I said, that's the first I've heard of it. So I submitted the bills for October to March of this year, which we were compensated for that. But then, my thing is, I guess, when I came and they didn't tell me I had to provide a bill for my phone every, you know, for the year, for the month, whatever, we'd compensate.
Well, I agree with you, I wasn't told either, and that's why I think we should pay whoever, I mean, if you're told, this is your salary, this is your phone allowance, then you as an employee of the county are expecting you're gonna get paid that, right?
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't look at the, at the big picture because, you know, my salary jumped from this to this, so I was just happy and then, you know, I didn't, I didn't go line by line, which in hindsight, I should have done that. But at the end of the year, with everything that had else going on, I didn't see that we had this money.
And how did y'all find out? I mean, you were comparing checks or something, you said, hey, why are you getting more?
I was in, holding court for Judge Mendoza, and Los Fresos, he mentioned that he hadn't been getting his, his allowance for the phone. So then I called the auditor's office to check on mine, I said, just, you know, just make sure.
Make sure I'm getting paid.
And then it turned out that I hadn't been getting mine either. And that's how this all came about. And I provided copies of my phone bills from January of eleven to the current, to both Mr. Hodge and to Ms. Galapsa.
So when you were originally sent something to sign off on your salary amount, it also had the phone allowance on there, correct?
Ah, yes.
And you signed it?
I signed here, the personnel.
So if they signed it, that it has their salary and phone allowance, why wouldn't we pay it?
I, I, I signed, I signed.
He went in there to sign off on getting the, I guess, the phone allowance after you heard about not being paid.
No, this is, I didn't sign off on anything, they just told me to provide the bills and they gave me a check.
It, but at the beginning of the year, you sent out a notice saying, this is your salary, this is your phone allowance, this is your car allowance?
Before the fiscal year begins.
Right, and someone signs off on it as the elected official, right?
And the explanation I received in February why I didn't get it was because I hadn't provided a copy of my cell phone contract.
But they never told you you had to do that?
That's the first time I ever heard of that.
Right, I never heard it when I was a JP, so I, I wasn't aware. So when did the auditor send that notice out to these new elected officials?
I, I don't, payroll doesn't really send those notices, like, I'm not sure who.
It's a salary schedule.
It's a salary schedule.
We get the salary schedule at the beginning of the fiscal year.
No, 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 but saying that you have to bring in your copy of your, when was that memo sent out to them? Do you have a record of it?
Payroll doesn't, I, I, I don't think the payroll department did that, requesting the, the bills, I think.
So then how can you expect them to bring in their phone record or their bill if you've never told them you need to bring it in? To me, that's unfair. When was it sent out, Javier?
There wasn't a, yeah, I don't know that there was a memo that was sent out.
So how would Judge Flores know that he has to bring in his contract?
Well, it, it should have been done as, as part of when they were enrolling as the new elected official and they were filling out that paperwork in the port and, and they submitted, as he said, the, what they were to get paid. And it should have been told to them, okay.
Whose obligation was it to tell them?
Well, as they're enrolling with, with payroll, they should have been told, okay. That, that, they needed to provide a copy of that.
Okay.
In order to start getting the allowance.
So who told this judge?
I, I, I don't know, I don't know, you know, who spoke to him or when it was.
If, if, to me, if there's someone that told them and then they failed to do it, I say we don't pay them. But if we never told them about it, then I don't think it's fair not to pay them.
I think it's fair to pay them, but I, I think we're constrained to the fiscal year.
Well, we just made a few million off the RMA.
No, that's yet to come, man.
But it's coming, right?
I don't know.
You know, the, uh, I, I think that we're putting the burden on, on, on payroll department to tell them, but the burden is also on the, on the recipient of that paycheck. You know, a hundred and eighty-two checks they got in that five-year period, or that seven-year period, and it never came up, a hundred and eighty-two times.
So bottom line, don't trust payroll.
Well, you don't, no, I think we all have a duty to check our, you know, check, check your pay, check your pay stub. And make sure that you're getting paid what you're supposed to be getting paid. I mean, but this went on, this was not like a one-year deal. This went on for seven years, according to what, what, what you're telling me.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I've brought this up before, it's, it's, it, it, department heads and elected officials do need to take some responsibility in their overall budget. The reports have always been sent out to the department heads and elected officials on a monthly basis. Line item detail, your budget to actual. Mobile phones is a separate line item, and so there's money budgeted there. And if you're looking at it monthly and there's zero charges there, I mean, I should tell you, why is it here this year and, and there's no.
How many line items does, does Cameron County have in that budget? When we get the, the, the audited financials, there's also a section in there, actual to variance, budget to variance, or, no, actual to, to budget. And there it should have surfaced as well, where there was a favorable variance on the expenditure side. So it's been there for, both since oh five. And no one ever said anything, oh, how come this happened? I mean, look, I, I, I think that we, we, we pay within this fiscal year and the other fiscal years, we do not.
And if they want to file a claim for it, I mean, legally, can we pay debt from seven years ago?
We could, not seven years ago, I mean, I couldn't recommend that. Uh, I think it's a, I think it's to be handled, you know, beyond this present fiscal year as a matter of a claim. I mean, these people would have a matter of a claim for this money. Uh, it would be subject to the statute of limitations, most likely the four-year statute of limitations. Be subject to the defenses that the county has to any lawsuit. And so, you know, I, I don't really think that they have much chance of succeeding on that claim. But on the other hand, as a matter of settling that claim, you can do, you know, what you want to do within, I, I mean, I don't see how you can go beyond four years at the, at the most, but you could do what you, what you may want to, to try to settle it.
I make a motion that we go back and pay up to four years whoever didn't get paid.
I have a motion to go back up to four years. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Dice for lack of second. Do I have another motion?
I move that we pay for one year and they wish to make a claim to the county, we, at that point, look at that option.
Well, you say one, one year, going back to the, to October first of this fiscal year? And pay them everything that they're due for this fiscal year, for now, okay?
Well, we have that obligation anyway, don't we, as long as they present the bills?
From this day forward, but I'm saying go back to the beginning of the fiscal year.
Well, don't we have an obligation in this fiscal year to pay them anyway? Because if at the end of the year, in September, they come and say, hey, I didn't get paid my phone allowance, here's my contract, you gotta pay me, you have to pay them, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to approve that, I mean, that's, that's a done deal anyway.
Well, it's on here for a reason.
Well.
Well, it's on here to get the, beyond the one year.
I want to direct you guys to pay them for this fiscal, beginning from the beginning of the fiscal year. Whatever motion did, however it needs to be worded, okay?
See, so, so we come to November of next year and they come in all this, we're in another fiscal year, so you're dead in the water again. So have you started to pay them from October first this way?
Yes, yes, we.
Okay, so they're current?
Yes, yes.
So it's a previous.
And I'd also like to direct you with any new incoming elected officials, that you get them to sign a document where you're telling them, look, if you don't bring this to us, we're not gonna pay you, so we don't run into this again. Make it part of their orientation packet or whatever, because the new elected official comes in, they're not gonna know, and a lot of them aren't used to dealing with budgets. I mean, how many new elected officials have you sat down with, Javier, and gone over budgets line by line and explained, as the year goes by, this is what you need to do? And then at the end of the year, I mean, do you really do that with any of them?
Um, the ones that ask.
But, but if they don't ask, you don't sit there and do an orientation with the new ones, right?
No, if they don't ask, I, I assume that they.
That they know.
That they know?
Yeah, you know, all they have to do.
That's an awfully brave assumption, though, Javier.
Right, because all it takes is getting the majority of the votes to become an elected official.
Oh, I underst, yeah, I understand that, but with, I, I've dealt over the years with a majority of elected officials who've called, who've come in, have met with me in the past, going over their budget line by line, and, and there's some that I've never seen. Uh, and, but their stuff gets turned in on, on an annual basis.
Good staff.
Their staff is doing it, because there are some that the staff handles, handles at all, so.
Have we paid everybody from the beginning of the fiscal year, or not?
Yes, they've all been paid.
Okay, so then they're current, okay, so then this item really requires a tabling at this point, if you've already done that.
If we've paid them from the beginning of the fiscal year to now, I'm what we table it.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, saying by Commissioner Adnandez, all in favor, same by saying aye? Any opposed carries? Item J, consideration authorization to utilize Texas contract number six eight four zero one six for price service agreement? Who's, who's doing that one? That's, uh, Marcelino?
Well, Judge and Commissioners, you tabled this last time because he was asking it that the vendor would not sign first, but the vendor is signing now and everything's fine.
Sign now, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Adnandez, thank you, all in favor, same by saying aye? Any opposed, item carries? Item K, discussion and financing of potential county projects.
Judge, Commissioners, I put this item on the agenda since we're doing the, the issue right now for the RMA, and we are getting ready to do the budget process. And we've had a couple of issues recently with the radio communication system and possible, we, I talked to Mr. Hoskins and Humberto about one particular item being antennas and what we pay for the, what the county pays a year for yearly lease space for the county antennas that we're on. And I was told it's between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rent that we pay yearly. I pa, I have a item I can pass out that kind of gives you the cost of one tower. That if we own, if we build and owned our towers, and I was also told, Mr. Hoskins, if I'm wrong, please stop me, that it would take approximately two towers for us to cover Cameron County and we could derive a lot of income from possible rentals on our towers. It would probably be a wash, and since, uh, the bond council's here, I would like to ask him what it would cost, maybe say one point five million dollars, how much would the bond payment be on one point five, off the top of your head?
Well, the bond payment on, on a million dollars, assuming twenty-year debt, four and a half percent, would be about seventy-six thousand, so we're talking about a hundred and thirty thousand or so.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up, we can, we, I, I do believe that we can derive a lot more income from those, if we own our own towers and rent to other entities, there's a lot of them out there that would rent from us. If we had five-hundred-foot towers strategically located on southern part of Cameron County, and rather than us paying a hundred and thirty thousand dollars every year for rental, we could basically derive income from the, from the tower project, it'd probably be a wash. Whether we want to do this on bond issue or not, I do not know. Also, I'm gonna, I would like to also request consideration for the animal shelter issue. I think it's still out there, it's gonna continue.
Commissioner, before you go to that one, let's go back, because I think your point on the towers is, is a good point. Let's go back. Uh, Chuck, I guess if, I guess at this point, what, what I'd like, I guess if the court's okay with it, ask you to develop, if you don't have it already, site, potential site locations. I know that one of the issues is, do we have available land in strategic areas that allows us to cover this? I think it's a good point, you know, and, and how would you do that?
Yeah, we will have to research it. Specifically, we need to have those towers in a, in a specific area to augment our, to, to ensure that we have the coverage that's necessary to cover the county.
Can you do that? I mean, before that, go into a lot of detail, but I don't want to do it this morning, but if you can go back and find those strategic areas and then see if you can come up with an estimate on the cost of construction, and then maybe an estimate of the revenue that it would generate either directly or indirectly. And indirectly by mean that we would not have to pay out the, the monthly or the annual antenna rental. Can you do that?
We'll work on.
And just come back maybe in about thirty days or so and see what you got?
Yeah, the only concern that I have, and I want to bring it up and make sure the court is aware of it, is we don't have any experience with the revenue side. And, and basically where towers would need to go is pretty much where they are today. So we would be looking in those same general areas, means that probably somebody is already leasing space on those towers, would they be willing to go to our towers, assuming they were there if we had a better rate or something like that?
Check it out.
We'll do that, we'll be glad to do that.
Okay, just go ahead and follow up on this. You can come back, either, you know, let Commissioner Adnandez know since he brought it up, and then maybe you can bring it to the court back in about thirty or forty-five days.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Also factor in insurance cost.
It's a relevant issue, and, and one of the towers would need to be in proximity to the coast, Port Isabel area, something like that, which puts it at risk.
Okay.
Is our equipment insured now? Was the equipment that we lost insured, have we heard from the insurance company yet?
We have heard from them. Um, there, there was some insurance coverage. Uh, Mr. Godowski's been talking with, we have actually adjusters coming in to look at the, the damage on Tuesday, on the, uh, this coming Tuesday, and we're gonna be going out there and.
So they haven't, they have not yet given you a number?
They have given Tom a, a number, yes. That, the, what they're, what they think that they would cover, uh.
And.
I'll let him speak to that.
But before you step off on the insurance, both to repair the tower of its damage and if we're gonna be hosting people, do we have an obligation to them as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck, just a nick of time. Forget it, Tom, can't talk anymore.
No, I want the number.
Delvia says we can't talk about this.
Right, it's not on the agenda.
Well, I, I thought it was broad enough to county projects, I mean, broad enough.
The other, the other thing I wanted to discuss was the potential funding for an animal shelter, but since Yvette's not ready with the numbers yet, we can't really talk about that.
Let's wait on hold off on that.
And, and of course, any other issues that any commissioner has or you about what we need to be doing going forward on the next budget cycle. And that's really the only reason I brought all this up, because we're getting ready for budget time and we're also doing a bond issue right now.
Peter, can I, I know Yvette's been busy with the Medicaid waiver stuff and all that, can you just get with her and ask her when we can expect some rough estimates from her? Because we really can't move forward on that issue until we have that.
Rough, rough?
Like rough, rough, exactly. All right?
Dave was in a good mood.
You guys are so funny, I swear. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge, uh, item K?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Gadsa, all in favor, same by saying aye? Any opposed, carries? Item L, discussion and possible action on the clean, cleanup, maintenance of private abandoned or historical cemeteries?
I put this item on, Judge, because I've gotten phone calls from people complaining about some of the trash along the cemeteries or the actual cemeteries. And I didn't know if, if there's a way that we as a county can either figure out a maintenance program or figure out who needs to maintain it? Because if they're privately owned.
Delvia's here.
If they're privately owned, um, cemeteries, can our code enforcement require the private owners to clean it? If they're historical cemeteries with no real owner, do we, um, step in and take over? Or do we call the state, what do we do?
On the private, we could take action if they're violating some kind of, you know, the nuisance where, you know, the weeds are a certain height, or there's rodents, or any kind of public issue, safety issue there.
Did you see the picture on that one?
I've got a number of them, very similar looking, I thought they were.
Right, so, so I mean.
We'd have to know who the owners are to be able to go and cite them, and, and then there's a process after that. If, if they don't take care of it, you know, there's an abatement process of, and the nuisance where the county can step in and, and, and abate the nuisance and charge those costs back or, or put a lien on the property. Um, as to the historical, that's something I'd have to look into because I'm not real aware of what, what we would do in that, in that sense.
What I have been told in the past when I have asked about this was that we could not go in there and clean them up. You know, that's what I have been told.
If they were privately owned.
If they were privately owned, that we could not go in there and, and, you know.
I, I don't think you can just go in there, but I think we'd cite the, the owners for violations.
That's a health, that's a health code issue.
But like, if, if it's a privately owned cemetery and, I mean, are, is this the type of thing that titles pass from generation to generation, or, I mean, how do you know who owns it? And if that person's still alive?
Joey would have that information.
Right, but like, if the person's not alive, I mean, do we do a title search? Do we do a, look for errors? I mean, how, how do we, how do we deal with this? And are, are these people taxed, private cemeteries, private property?
Usually they're excluded if you are recorded in the court records.
And if they're not recorded, then they should be taxed? Is Tony here?
No, he just stepped off.
Well, could, can you maybe look into it, Delvia, and maybe give us some sort of alternatives? Because we, I, I get a lot of phone calls on little cemeteries.
Yeah, and I think coupled with that, Peter, you might want to get with Yvette also because this issue has come up many, many times in the past in terms of the cemeteries. And the, the problem that you have is, you also have, if it's a private cemetery, people believe that if they're indigent, they can be buried in that cemetery. And these are privately owned cemeteries, so if, if we're gonna start taking some kind of possession by cleaning them up, then you're opening up that cemetery for public use, anybody can be buried on it. So get with Yvette and have her give the commissioner what she has found out on, on these historical or private cemeteries, did you find up two eighty-one all over the place?
Everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah.
And then with, and Delvia, you do your deal, okay? Do I hear a motion, then you want to table it, Commissioner?
Uh, table.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez to table, saying by Commissioner Gadsa, all in favor, same by saying aye? Any opposed, carries? Item M, discussion and possible amendment of Commissioner's Court standing order to ensure all law enforcement patrol units have the proper police vehicle emblem and striping. Commissioner, that's yours.
I put this on that we were having trouble, I guess, in one of my precincts uh, getting the decals for the vehicle, and there was a discussion between which ones were right, which ones were wrong. So I said, well, let's, you know, let's bring this back and, and just clarify, which ones are the correct ones to do and does everybody have to be marked? I thought we had cleared that up already, but I'm not sure.
Well, let's get with Javier first. Is Lee here by any chance? Lee Martinez? Should he be here? Tom?
He's here at all the other meetings.
Back, back in, was it '07? Was it '07?
It's, I know, Constable Lopez.
Okay, in '07, I believe, if I remember right, the court passed, I guess, an agenda item. Is it '07?
Is that the policy? Is that the policy?
Yes.
Okay.
So the striping? It's the men is dealing with the emblems for constable vehicles.
Okay, yeah.
And it was approved by Commissioner.
Right. Remember the date? Okay, it was September the 11th of '07, and Commissioner Tamayo motioned to approve the change of police vehicle emblems and striping for all constable police units with the modification of county police to precinct number. And seconded by Commissioner Benavides, and this is what it shows. So unless something has come up subsequent to that, where that changes, and this is the standing order of the commission. So I don't know where it changed, how it changed, but that, this does not address the, yeah, you can come up, this does not address the unmarked units, and we have several unmarked units that are being driven around all over the place, and I believe those should be marked as well.
Right. Well, I've gotten, I've gotten phone calls from people saying, why aren't these marked, units marked? People are using them for private, personal stuff, and, you know, those are my tax dollars, and that kind of thing, so...
So anyway, this is the standing order. And so we have not heard anything otherwise, so unless the court is wants, let's talk about constables first, because that's what this addresses to. So unless the court wants to change this, then this is it. This is the deal. No exceptions, unless the court wants to change the order.
I don't have a problem marking the unit. We just want to keep it uniform with all, a white car with a gold decal. So I have no problem, that's the problem I'm having with Lee right now. He doesn't want it to match our current cars. According to your thing, it doesn't say colors. What? I didn't see that.
Yeah, there's...
It was approved back in the...
Yeah, whatever it is, it is. I mean, this is it.
Our department, I don't know, I can show you, all four, our four units are white with gold. And the new charger, we want it to continue so it can be uniformed.
Okay.
So whenever people call our office and say, hey, this car, and we're like, well, what color is it? We automatically know if it's white and gold, it's us, and if it's a different color, call a different constable, because it's not us.
That's fine.
So we just want to keep it uniform.
I think we're talking about the markings, the striping and the decals, not necessarily the color of the vehicle.
Well, we want to stay with the same markings.
But is it the same as everybody else's?
Okay, their markings, the markings should be this, because I don't, again, I don't know where it got off center, but this was the order.
Why aren't they all the same?
I don't know, because that's the way it's been.
Our cars have always been that color. Nobody's, I mean, just last, six months ago, we got a car decal back to white and gold.
And it was approved, no problem.
Yes, no problem.
I believe some of their cars are probably older, and they have the older markings.
The older markings?
So six months ago, you got the same color that your other cars have?
Correct. They got, the decals were already kind of fading, or peeling off, so we took it to Lee, and he fixed it.
And he put the same colors you had on before?
Exactly.
And now he doesn't want to put them on?
Correct.
Because now he's following...
They should all be uniform.
They should all be uniform, that's correct.
I mean, I got a car, I didn't, nobody asked me if I wanted a different color, or wanted something different. I think everybody should be uniform.
It has the CC.
Our colors are the same with the sheriff's office. I mean, the same gold. It's not like you're going to go out and buy a different color.
What I'm saying is, yours is not like, like Constable Lopez, or Constable...
Precinct 5 is the only one that has the white car with the gold.
Do we have money to make them all the same? Because we're going to have to restripe them all.
If they come due, you know, you make the changeover. You don't have to do them all at one time.
Well, but if that's our policy, they should all look the same.
Our four units are all white and gold. So I mean, if you want to change them all to black and gold, I guess, just as long as they're all uniform. But that's the problem with the constable. He says, our fleet is not going to look the same. It's going to be three gold and one black.
And the precinct seven right now, what do they have?
I believe they have the black.
So why don't we make them all the same, all uniform?
Just as long as you get all four of them uniformed.
Yeah.
Okay, let's have them all restripped.
According to Lee, we didn't have any money in the budget, so that's why we were arguing it.
Now, are you talking about the logo not being the same, or the font? There's a difference.
The color of the logo.
No, everything, the color and everything.
Yeah, we have no problem changing, as long as you change the whole fleet, not just one car.
Give them all new markings. Pete, do you have money somewhere in the budget? Can we get it done? I don't know. If Lee was here, call Lee and ask him.
Let's just figure it out.
It's not Martinez though, it's Lozano in case you...
That's the problem we have, we've never had enough money to change the decals.
Oh, yes, right. I don't want to call Lee Martinez, you're right.
$2.50 per car, so we're looking at $12.50 for five cars.
JP Technology Fund.
Okay, so let's...
As long as they all get decals.
Or courthouse security? Courthouse security, actually, because they secure the JPs.
Let the testimony, Robert, did you have something to say, or we've already covered what you had to think, talk about?
I'll say more briefly. I was involved with the 2007 changing of the things when we did it, and Precinct 5 Constable Lupin Gonzales was part of it, he agreed on it. When we changed all our units, he just stayed with the old ones. And we asked him several times to do it, and he just wanted to stay with the old ones. After he agreed, so that's...
Maybe he didn't have the money.
Well, we did, we did one car, you know, we went new guards, we switched to the new ones. I mean, all of us, Williams was here, we all did it. They just never wanted to switch. What we wanted to do was keep uniformed.
You're willing to do it now? Okay. Yeah, let's just get it done, Lee.
Yeah, no names.
Lee, Pete. But we're going to need more than that, because we need, there's some unmarked that we need to mark too.
So they need to be all the same?
Let's talk about, let's make sure, Commissioner, that we're all on the same page on the constable, because that's what the memo that we got is. So we're all in agreement that you're going to go back, and they'll all be uniform, right? Pete, you're going to find the...
All our units will be same.
Well, that'll be your...
Yeah, all of them.
All of them should be the same.
Every constable will have the same markings.
Well, no, I don't have a problem with that, but the reason we hadn't done it is because we don't have any money in our budget to do it.
Pete's going to find the money.
They're going to take care of that for you.
We'll take care of that.
Awesome.
And then have Lee report back once everybody's...
Yes, Lee Lozano, I'm sorry, I said Lee Martinez, or somebody else. Okay, constables, Bunias, and, oh, Yacundo Samora, you had something on, or you're okay with this? You're already in compliance, right? Okay? Now, on all your vehicles? Okay, what do we, okay, now let's talk about the unmarked vehicles.
I've gotten some complaints about unmarked units, or, and, so I'd like to make a motion that we mark all constable units, because the function of the constable is really to be the bailiff for the court and serve papers, and I don't think having marked decals would hinder that process.
Okay, what about on the, so just specifically to the constables only, you're not talking about the tax office, the sheriff, the DA?
Well, that's all we have on the agenda today.
Okay.
Is constables. That's all we can talk about.
All of them? It says all law enforcement.
Law enforcement patrol units.
Hi, I thought you were going to get out of it, huh?
Do what?
You thought you were going to get out of it, huh?
No, no, law enforcement does law enforcement.
That's right, everybody.
Constables serve papers, and they're bailiffs of the court.
Yeah, but they're law enforcement.
Right.
Right. So the sheriff, so the DA.
Right.
So is the tax office, for that matter.
Right. Let's mark all of them.
I don't have a problem with that.
No problem with that?
I don't think anybody has any problem with that.
I make a motion.
Okay. All right. And you're going to, okay, here, everybody start standing up now, because now we're hitting home here. That's the deal.
When you're saying you're going to stripe all of them, you're talking about CID, you're talking about every single vehicle.
Other...
Do you have CID vehicles?
My car is a CID vehicle, and it's also, whenever I go work, narcotics or whatever, it's not marked.
But don't you have another unmarked vehicle available for you?
No.
So you drive an unmarked vehicle all the time?
All the time.
Basically.
Yes.
And I think that's the complaint...
That we're getting.
I've gotten some too over there, not recently, but over the years.
I understand. But I mean, it's kind of not going to be effective to say you're going to mark every single unit.
But let me ask you, on the unmarked vehicle, do you have regular plates, or exempt plates?
Regular plates.
Okay, and do you have any other type of lighting, any in-the-grill lights, or anything else like that?
Yes.
You do?
Just like any other CID unit would do it.
Okay.
Every CID unit for the sheriff's office, every unit.
What is CID?
Criminal Investigation Division.
But you are one member of the division?
Correct.
So it's a division of one?
Well, what happens is, if I need to go look at something, and I take one of my deputies with me, I take my truck. If I'm looking at a house that's dealing cocaine, and I'm looking at who comes in and out, I'm not going to go to a marked vehicle. How's that, I mean, that doesn't work. What I'm saying is, the same objectives that the sheriff's office, or the district attorney's office, or special operations group is doing is the same objection, objectives that I have in my precinct. So if you're saying you're going to stripe every single unit, then that's fine to stripe every single unit, but you're going to stripe out every investigation vehicle, every narcotics vehicle?
Well, I think there's a distinction between the sheriff's department and constable in the sense that part of the sheriff's duties are criminal investigation.
So are mine.
Well, I, if we look at the constitution...
That's been your opinion since you came in, I understand that, but...
That's what the statute says.
But the statute says we're peace officers.
Right.
Okay.
Doesn't say criminal investigation.
Well, neither does the sheriff's office say criminal investigation. It falls under peace officers, sure.
Okay.
The state of Texas only has peace, state peace officers. DPS, everybody falls under state peace officers.
How many criminal investigations have you done this last year?
You want to come, you'd have to go to my office, and I can show you the criminal investigations.
Ballpark.
I have no idea.
More, more than five?
More than 100, probably.
More than 100, okay. And is there a reason that you're doing them and not the sheriff?
Well, basically because I take care of the island.
The island?
In Laguna Heights.
The park?
Correct.
Okay. And from the sheriff's department, any reason why y'all don't handle the criminal investigations?
Where?
No, no, I'm asking them, because you're doing over 100, I'm asking them why they don't handle them.
Lieutenant Gassal, how many we have this year? About 2,000.
No, 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 but he's saying that he did over 100 in his area, and I'm asking why y'all don't cover those.
Well, he's a law enforcement officer, just like we are. We handled about 2,000 this fiscal year, and they picked up 100 on their own. We don't oversee what the constables are doing. They're their own, they have their own offices, their own work that they do, whatever they do, investigations, that's their, that's their deals.
So, but if they focused on serving papers and being the bailiff of the court, would you be able to handle the criminal investigations?
Well, we handle anything that comes into the sheriff's office, we handle. Now, of course, they get their own people, complainants and stuff like that, that go into their offices, and they handle, they don't, they won't call us unless it's something that's like homicide or something, even at that, you know, Samora handles...
Handles their own.
Those type of cases.
If they were to refer those to you, you would be able to handle them?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's do this, because I can, obviously, by you guys being here, it's a concern to you. No one, no one on the court wants to hinder any type of criminal investigations, and I know that the constable's office have, even though the old rule of thumb, I guess, has been to do warrants, I mean, some constables have decided to undertake additional law enforcement duties that they can under the statute. I think that the discussion regarding the marking of unmarked vehicles is, we're going to have to save that, I believe, for another day to actually talk about it. But I think the complaints that I've received, and I'm sure the commissioner's received, is that they see folks driving that they know are law enforcement in an unmarked vehicle, attending, you know, private events, or non-law enforcement events. And it happens, and, you know, maybe not you guys do it, but there's been some that do, and I think that's where it pops out, and those are the kind of complaints that we receive. So I don't think we penalize everybody and paint everybody with the same brush for the indiscretions of, you know, three or four that just use bad judgment in doing that. So I would recommend that, instead of doing and marking every unmarked vehicle without taking into consideration the actual duties that y'all are doing, that we workshop with Commissioner, and...
Okay, well, what if we do this, at least mark everyone except one per constable's office?
Why don't we, why don't we ask them to tell us, you know, if they want unmarked vehicles, just tell us on an agenda item, you know, I mean...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think, Commissioner, I think we workshop this later on, where we have, get everybody in here.
You have one Commissioner's, I mean, Constable Samora, and one's enough for you to get it done? Okay. Why don't we let each one have one unmarked for now? Everything else we mark, and then we can visit it some more? Because, you know, if everybody knows they're law enforcement, what good is it for it not to be unmarked?
They're not undercover.
Right. So, I mean, do y'all have a fleet of undercover unmarked units? Is there any problem if the constable needed to borrow a vehicle to do some surveillance work, for y'all to lend them a unit?
They're assigned, probably.
It all depends, I mean, we always help them out in whatever they need.
Right, I mean, y'all work together, right?
Absolutely.
Because everybody knows if it's the white truck with the dark tint, it's a constable unit, regardless of whether it's marked or not. I mean, that's why we're getting the complaints, if not, we wouldn't be getting these complaints.
Whoever didn't know that, knows that now.
Yeah.
Well, there you have it.
Well, let's, okay, then, the...
Our only concern is, you know, when you mention every single county unit...
Well, I didn't mean for every unit, I know you guys do a lot of undercover work, but that's your job as the sheriff's department, you know, and, and yes, people say that my opinion differs, uh, but the reading of the statute is what I go by. And the fact that we have, you know, millions of dollars in uncollected warrants just sitting there is what I go by, so...
Okay, let's do this, Commissioner.
I make the motion that all constable units, with the exception of one per department, be marked.
Okay, can withdraw your, your other motion of marking all unmarked vehicles? You withdraw because you don't have a second?
I withdraw that one.
Okay, then you're gonna make a, can you include in that motion also, because we didn't, we haven't done it?
The tax office?
No, the, uh, the, having all markings and striping identical for all constable units, and having one unit out of the unmarked units to be striped as well, leaving one unit per con, because most of them have only one unit unmarked, except for precinct four.
And seven.
And precinct seven, so the instruction would be on precinct four and seven, pick out one unit that needs to be marked, that way everybody has one unit. On the sheriffs, the DA, and the, and the tax office, and the county jail, let's workshop that and have them explain to us why they need six units, as an example, the tax office, why do they need six units of unmarked vehicles?
What about the tax office, is there any need for them not to be marked?
Well, that's what I'm asking, because they've got, they've got six units out of, six out of six that are unmarked.
So, we mark four of them and leave two unmarked?
Yeah, but I think we need to give, like, we're giving the sheriff, the DA, and the county jail the opportunity to come in and talk to us.
Tell us why.
Give it, you know, why, why they need it.
That's fine.
Okay, so that's your motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you get that either? You're cool?
You're clear.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries, and then Pete, if you can bring that item back to, uh, maybe a workshop item sometime in mid-July, after, after the July 4th holiday? All right. Item N, consideration, possible approval of the following agreements with Motorola Corporation. Item A, purchase agreement, B, financing agreement, C, maintenance and service agreement.
Judge, Commissioners, uh, at your last meeting, uh, it was discussed that we would take this to County Legal, uh, and would have them review the documentation, if they were okay with it, we would bring it back to the court. Uh, Dubia and, uh, Bruce have, have looked at the documents, I think they're okay with it. Uh, we, we have Javier here representing the auditor's office to, uh, talk about, uh, Martha's, uh, uh, assessment of the agreement as far as, um, number of years that, um, we would wanna see in a lease purchase, and, uh, the finance rate, and I'll ask Javier to come up and speak to that.
Judge and Commissioner, I just wanna let you know that the changes that we recommended were, were, were made.
So it's ready, good to go?
You're recommending approval?
Financing in place?
The only, the financing, I think you need to talk because, to, you know, discuss what term and...
Yeah, there's, there was actually, uh, I'm not sure if y'all got a copy of it, but, uh, the proposal from, from Motorola, um, the rates that they have under their financing agreement are actually lower than what, uh, we're currently getting with, uh, the bank that we're financing our equipment list through. They have a, uh, submitted...
Is there an exhibit number or letter associated?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I didn't prepare the item, but, so I don't know if it was included in, in your backup or not.
It, it is in the packet.
What exhibit is it?
Well, it...
This is something different.
It's listed, it's an exhibit. Mr. Martin is also here from, from Motorola. It's, it's the one that just breaks down and shows three different, uh, rates, one for five years, one for seven years, one for ten years. It shows the actual percentage.
Yeah, but I know there's exhibit letters associated with each one, do you know which one that is, or I can find it?
Was there letters associated with that?
Can I, I just find this?
Sir? No, that's, that's the maintenance.
That's not?
Towards the, the very back of the packet.
It's under tab, it's under tab number five.
We don't have that. Let me see. This is different. This is exhibit E.
It's the same thing, but it doesn't have the badge. It runs, run out of time trying to reproduce it. Two videos or five videos like that, and, you know, we're all, all in that.
All of it.
I don't know, maybe these guys have, oh yeah, yeah, see if I can... Okay, now I can follow you. Which one are you recommending?
Um, there, there was three, it was five, seven, and ten years. Uh, I know there was some concern, uh, the last meeting about the, the trust by the court for ten years, uh, some of the equipment, you know, maybe some of the portable, something may not even last, uh, because of wear and tear, uh, the ten years. So, uh, we recommend the seven years, uh, which if, if the court is, you know, still wanting to do the, the total project, uh, uh, and the financing of the three point three million dollars, um, you know, their, their lease payment is gonna be, uh, five hundred, just over five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year for the seven years.
I saw that.
Um, just to make the court aware, depending on, on the, you know, direction that we get later on, this would have an, a, an impact, uh, or not, on the amount available to finance, uh, other equipment, which we normally do as part of the equipment list.
It would what?
This, this amount, depending on, um, you know, your decision.
Which option, yeah.
Yeah, would impact possibly the, the amount available to finance other equipment, but it may not, if this is just gonna be on top of that, then that's one thing, or if it's gonna be considered as part of the formal equipment list or not, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, what y'all are gonna wanna do in that respect.
What do you recommend, this is something we gotta do, right?
You're gonna have to do it.
Our opinion, yes.
Yeah, we have to do it, so what is your recommendation in terms of the financing? I mean, it's a low interest rate.
Yeah, it is, the seven years.
So it's like two point five three, and, I mean, it's, it's pretty low.
Correct.
So is that what you're gonna, that, that you're recommending? First installment would be one in fiscal year 2013, 14?
Yeah, it would be October 1st, 2013.
Okay, so it's not...
It's a little more than a year.
Okay, so it's not this budget year, it's the following budget year?
That's correct.
Okay, we gotta do it, we gotta do it. All right.
Yeah, and I guess, uh, Commissioner Garza wasn't here for that last meeting, didn't hear, where, where you're all looking at using, initially drawing the funds was from the equipment purchase.
Right.
Uh, list, and so that's, that's why that was brought up. We have to do it.
Is there, is there a maintenance agreement?
There is a, a maintenance agreement that is attached.
Sorry.
Uh, we, we do have one year of, um, from the point that we, we sign off on the equipment, we have one year that that equipment will be out there before any maintenance is required, so it's probably not something we have to take action on today, uh, but we, we do believe that maintenance is important on, on the backbone, not necessarily on the mobiles and portables. I don't think it's necessary for us to, to ensure those are, uh, by comparison, a low dollar item, and ought to become the responsibility of each department to maintain.
So you want us to approve item A and B and defer on, on the, on item C, which is the maintenance and service agreement?
We, we don't have to take action on that today, ultimately, we will need to do something before the warranty period runs out.
Can we do that at a later time, or does it make a difference to you?
And if we do it at a later time, are we gonna, will they give us the same price that would be available right now? Or is it gonna be higher a year from now?
On how we decide to pay for that, and, uh, I, I doubt that the finance rate is gonna be the same at that time. If we did it now, it, it's not included in these figures, by the way, the, the dollars that, that were quoted are best and final, this is, uh, actually a better number than what we had originally was, uh, three million four, and now it's down to three million three. Uh, so they have dropped...
So if we wait a little bit longer, go down to three billion two?
I'd, yeah.
Well, the way gas prices are going, maybe.
That, that would be nice, but...
Okay, so what do you want us to do with, with the, with the maintenance and service agreement? I think Commissioner Benavides' point is good, is it gonna cost us more to do it later, or do we do it now?
I, I would defer and let Mr., uh, Martin, uh, talk about that.
All right.
Judge, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, uh, the rates, as far as for the maintenance and all, we have figured the rates based on today's, obviously, today's labor rates and today's costs, um, and we've calculated them to, for the term of the seven years. Um, there are, are a number of services that are gonna be provided under this maintenance agreement, um, and you can, you can basically take and, uh, you know, select the various services, but, uh, but it is for all, all of the infrastructure, and it would go through the year seven. Um, I can't, it depends on, I guess, the, the timing of how long it would be in the future before, you know, a decision would be made whether or not to maintain it, uh, but it could be maintained, or a maintenance agreement could be taken out before the warranty period is expired. The warranty period will be expired a year from the acceptance of the system, so, um, if it's, if it takes us eight weeks to put in the system, then it would be a year from that point. Um, so it is something that could be, you know, we could extend, uh, I just don't know that I could extend the rates beyond, uh, today.
But the rates could go down as well.
The, potentially, I mean, it, it depends on the equipment, but, uh, uh, you know, I doubt that I would say, I, I would doubt very seriously the rates will go down, but I, I would maybe hold even. But, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, let me recommend that we just go ahead and, um, do A, B, and C, and lock in those numbers now.
I agree. For the seven-year term also.
Seven-year term. I'll, I'll make that motion. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item O, consideration, approval of evaluation committee for the following RFQs, Cameron County Lab Diagnostic Services Infirmary, Cameron County Radiological Diagnostic Mobile Services Infirmary, um, insurance, flood, the evaluators are Dean Garza, David Garcia, Mark La Galaza, Javier Villarreal. Uh, anybody have any recommendations?
Mr. Forbes would like for this item to be tabled.
Thank you, after I read it all?
No move.
Second.
Move the table by Commissioner Benavides, same thing, and by Commissioner Sanchez.
Why, why would we wanna table this?
Mike, why are we tabling it?
This is just a committee, you know, I mean...
The only thing I would like to add, if, if we can, if we can do that, is add maybe somebody from the Health Department, either Yvette, or one of her staff, I know Peter was here earlier, um, or Es, or Esmer, maybe somebody from that department.
Somebody from there and just, I mean, it's standing in the committee.
Because it's dealing with medical, and, you know, they're, they used to do the infirmary, and...
Okay.
If there's no objection, just add her, or somebody from her office to that, to that committee.
And then, why do we have both Martha and Javier from the same department on there, we probably only need one of them?
In case one of them doesn't show up.
Well, but it's like David and Pete, it's one or the other.
Yeah, if you wanna remove one of us, that's, that's fine, uh, the reason that why we're both there, because I was there initially in capacity of the budget officer, but when that position was eliminated, you know, I went to the auditor's office and...
But you're still the budget officer, though.
No.
Who is?
Martha.
Oh, she's a budget officer? I thought it was you.
That, that position was eliminated.
Right, I, I remember that, remember that.
You took him out of your budget and put him in Martha's.
Yeah, I remember that.
So there is no budget officer anymore, it's, it's part of the duties of the county auditor.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I still work on the budget, of course, but...
So either or.
That's why we're both on there, but if one...
I'd say either Martha or you, either one of you.
But that's up to the...
Anybody else, anybody wanna add?
No.
No?
No.
Sure?
Positive. Move to approve with that change.
Okay, wait a minute, let the reception, Commissioner Benavides. Uh, Commissioner Sanchez.
Did you make it, you talked about?
No, I think the, the tabling was by Commissioner Benavides and seconded by Commissioner Sanchez, so retract the tabling, and then make a motion to approve adding somebody from the Health Department, and changing, uh, to include either Martha Galaza or Javier Villarreal.
So moved.
Okay, move by Commissioner Garza, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item P, consideration, action, appointing the county auditor to chair a committee comprised of the county auditor, county clerk, tax assessor, collector, legal division, JP 22, to study the possibility of centralizing collections for all JP offices? Anybody have any problem with that?
Yeah, uh, and can, first of all, I'd like to say why I put it on, we, it's budget time, again, it's budget time, and, um, we've had some money issues with the JPs in the past, I think it's a good idea to let, let them get together and talk about
How to do it.
the best way to do it, and then bring it back to us with our recommendations.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
By Commissioner Hernandez.
I would, um, ask that if it's just talking about collections, you add one of the JPs from the Harlingen area that are on the different system, because they have high collection rates, and, and so they can have participation in, because it's just discussion, right?
That's the system we're getting ready to eliminate September 30th.
Well, I understand, but...
Yeah, we can add somebody.
They do something right, because they know about the collections.
Yeah, who do you wanna add?
Either Judge Sally or Judge Gano, either one.
Judge Gano.
Judge Gano?
Yeah.
Okay, can you ask Judge Gano, see if he's able and willing to...
We appoint him to the committee.
To sit up there and be a candidate?
Well, can we appoint either one, if one's not able to, the other one goes? I mean, just so long as we have somebody who they have high collection rates.
Okay, uh, let's do that, add either Judge Gano or Judge Sally Gonzalez to that. Well, do I hear a second with that change?
Second.
By Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item Q, we talk after executive session?
I was just gonna tell you, I don't think we need an executive session, we have the title work now, and we're working through it, and Jim Allison's coming up with the timeline of this business, so...
So is this one ready to approve?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to table?
Just, yeah, I would, I would urge you to table it and the executive session item as well.
Okay, which is item C? On the executive session?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to table item Q in the regular and C in the executive session?
So move.
Can we table executive session right now?
Yeah.
We're not gonna talk about it.
I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
All right, second.
B, I mean, uh, move by Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Sanchez to table those items, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Wait, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Can Legal make sure the, see if you can include for every pound that is delivered to the space station, we get a little percentage, just like we did on the toes in the road?
I think that's an excellent idea, I, I understand that when Canaveral launches over there, they get a five million dollar launch fee.
Fee, okay, so, uh, there's any possibilities there, Bruce? You know, kinda like, uh, shape up on space launch?
Hey, but the difference here is none of our people are gonna be going up there as we think.
No, no, we don't, that, that reduces...
Some of us are already there, but okay, uh, we're already, we're already in space.
We want SpaceX here, let's not drive them away, folks.
So I had a motion to table item Q, regular, and C, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, Adam Carries. Item R, FEMA reimbursements?
Um, Judge, Commissioners, not much to report, other than, uh, last time this item was on, we did, uh, make some calls, the, uh, the emergency management office did make some calls. The, um, what we found out is that we have a check that is on hold for about one point three million. We're waiting on one item for, um, one of the audits, and then the final audit on the PW. We are working through, uh, that PW to get all that information to FEMA.
How much are we still out, one point?
One point three.
One point four?
Three.
One point three.
You need me to go get that check, or what?
Yeah.
We were there yesterday.
Hey, well, David, let me ask you this, does part of this have to do with whoever got the contract to remove all this stuff, or is that not why we're not getting this reimbursed?
Well, part of, yes and no, not, not, not who got the contract to remove it, but who got the contract to report all this information. What we're learning and what we're seeing is that, you know, Dolly occurred five years ago, six years ago, and, and there's a bunch of information that, that was submitted at the time, uh, from the different particular departments, whether it was parks, public works, um, whoever was involved in that particular PW. So five, six years ago, you submit a PW, and the company that helped submit that PW is off working on something else, you know, and we're trying to extract information from them, and then we're also trying to get information that we submitted five, six years ago, that is, you know, in another department somewhere. And so it's, it's a matter of trying to get all that information back, and resubmit it to the auditors, so that the auditors could satisfy all the, all the claim.
So, do we take that into consideration when we pick the new company for this next year that, if we have a disaster, I mean, are they gonna be able to take care of this, so we don't have these problems again? I mean, are we getting the same company?
I, I think their contract isn't up until next year, um, if I'm not mistaken, the monitoring company, Beck. But yeah, that is something that we're gonna have to add to the contract, some sort of stipulation that says,